Okay, it's one o'clock. And it looks like we have a number of folks in the meeting. Ms. Camacho, I just want to confirm that the recording has started.
Yes, it has.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and get going. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Assembly Budget and Finance Committee of the whole. It is Thursday, February 18, 2021, and we are noticed from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. I am Suzanne LaFrance, the Chair of this committee. The Vice Chair is Assembly Member Cameron Perez Verdia. Ms. Camacho, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Allard?
Here.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. LaFrance?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Perez Verdia? Mr. Rivera? Mr. Whittleton?
Here.
And Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
You have a call.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Camacho. I just want to remind members and any folks from the public that the documents for this meeting are available at muni.org. If you click on Assembly and scroll down on the left to Committees, click on Budget and Finance Committee, and you will see that the agenda is posted there along with a few other documents that we'll be referencing during this meeting. The first one, AR 2021-47 is Item E, and then AIM 26-2021, the expenditure report for November, will be part of Item C. And then there are revenue documents that we will reference for Item D. And I just want to note, too, for members to please use the chat to put yourself in the queue, but if you do put anything of substance in there, I will ask you to read your comments since the chat is not an official part of the record for this meeting. Okay, so we've got a number of items on our agenda today, particularly under new business. We'll begin with a report from the Budget Advisory Commission, and then that's Item A. Item B is the COVID Recovery Plan. Item C, we'll get an update on the 2020 and 2021 budgets. Item D, an update on the MOA financial status. And then Item E will be covering AR 2021-47, which is reallocating funds for COVID-19 relief programs. And then any other business after that. Then we'll move on to Committee Legislative and Budget Priorities, and then end with audience participation. Does anyone have any comments or questions about the agenda? Okay, I don't see anything. We will go ahead then, and if we have Jonathan King, the Vice Chair of the Budget Advisory Commission, on, we'll go ahead and start with that report. Mr. King, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So the Budget Advisory Commission in the last month has really been focused on four topics. The first one was, we just ended about two minutes ago, an hour-long session with Dr. Kevin Berry from the University of Alaska Anchorage, looking at his research on pandemics and economic effects of pandemics and the economic effects of mitigation measures during pandemics, and just having that discussion of, you know, what really are the economic effects and how much are they related to things like government lockdowns? And I do encourage people to go watch that if they're interested in that topic. It was a recorded session. The takeaway is that, you know, much of the economic impact comes from individuals changing their own behavior. Lockdowns actually have a relatively small effect on the economy itself, although there are certain specific sectors that feel that more acutely. And so Dr. Berry's takeaway is, what do we do to make people feel safe, that they feel to get safe enough to get outside and spend money into the economy so the economy stays float? A lot of discussion at our last meeting about body cams and the alcohol tax. A number of us heard from the public that, you know, we really want to make sure that we're spending that money in accordance with the will of the voters. That was a topic. Also had a presentation, the annual presentation on property appraisal by Jack from the Property Appraisal Finance Division, and that was really great. And then the last item that we're talking about is that last year, each of the Commission members took one department to review and to meet with, and this year, we're stepping up our game, and everybody's volunteering to do at least two departments to meet with and talk to, and really make sure that the Commission is connected to the departments so that we can find out how we can serve them and to make sure that we understand their functioning the best that we can. So, hey, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. That is what we've been focusing on of late.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do members have any comments or questions? I'm not seeing anyone in the chat. I did have to say, I smiled when you said that your members are stepping up their game, because it seems like in the past year, the Budget Advisory Commission has been very busy and very engaged, and thank you very much for that effort. And I'm not sure where that sound is coming from.
Well, we thank you for that commentary. We recognize that within the last 18 months or so, that the energy has shifted on the Commission. It's a much more active Commission. We recently changed chairs, and the number-one discussion with the new chair was, Ms. Rodriguez, was, how do we make sure that we keep what's working right now? Because it is a Commission that has more energy and is doing more. So, thank you. Thank you for the commentary and the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. King. Appreciate all your work and the work of the Budget Advisory Commission members as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. We will go ahead then and move on to Item B, COVID Recovery Plan. Is there someone from the administration who's going to take us through these four bullet points on the agenda?
Yes, Chair LaFrance, Alex Slivka, Chief Fiscal Officer. So, just as a general overview, people will remember that the municipality received $156 million in CARES grant funds via the state in 2020, and the Assembly divvied that up among a variety of programs. The vast majority of that has been spent. You have an item that will be discussed further on down in Item E, and that is about $22 million. Those were funds that were moved to the General Fund for a variety of reasons, primarily timing. And I guess if we had been more thoughtful in December, when we took that action, we would have made that for 2021, so we didn't have to come back in front of you, but we didn't. So, this is just, the Item E is just, again, authorizing these funds that you previously had authorized, but which lapsed due to the end of 2020. The emergency rental assistance, I think everybody has seen the news. We received this money, and I believe what I've seen is Alaska Housing Finance's website is up and running, and they've received, I believe, the number I saw was 15,000 applicants. So, I think, you know, the status of that is, once that application period closes, there'll be some decisions made on how to allocate. In terms of pending legislation, Jason Backstead has kind of been looking at what's been going on in Washington, DC. I don't see him on the call, so I have nothing to add there, and I will stop.
Thank you, Mr. Slivka. Do members have any questions or comments? Actually, Mr. Slivka, on B, the Fund 101-000 programs, would you just explain what that references?
Certainly. Over the course of our conversations with U.S. Treasury, there were suggestions made, which we followed, that there were programs that we could use CARES grant for, but it would be, we would be better served if we used CARES grant funds to pay for first responder salary, and then, you know, the monies that would otherwise have been spent on those salaries would be available to be used for other programs. So, an example that I think most people are aware of, that the $12,500,000 the Assembly approved for three specific buildings to address congregate, non-congreg式的 sheltering. Those, that program got moved to, it's the General Fund. It's the fund number in SAP is 101-000. And a like amount of first responder salaries, police and fire, were moved and charged against the CARES grant. So, there were a variety of programs that got moved from the CARES grant to the General Fund. Primarily at the time, the concern was, could we get things done by the then deadline of December 30th, 2020? So, hopefully, that answers the question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Slivka. And we've got Mr. Dunbar in the queue. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Alex, this might be for you, or maybe perhaps someone else in the administration, but I'm wondering if there's any potential impact from the expiration of the state's emergency declaration? Are there any perhaps federal pass-through funds that would go through the state that we are worried might be jeopardized by that expiration?
I don't see, Kate. I know the one that I am aware of, but municipal attorney and probably no more, is roughly $8 million a month in SNAP funding is no longer available, and I've seen reports that the state is attempting to find an alternative way to get those resources. That's the only one that I'm aware of. There was nothing related to what we've been doing with the COVID and CARES-related funds that were impacted by that. But there are other things which are not related to the finances that I'm not aware of.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. And before we go to Mr. Constant, Mr. Slivka, would you clarify what SNAP stands for?
I would have to look it up, but it is...
Food stamps.
It is food assistance.
Okay, that's good. We can Google it from there if anyone's listening and curious. Oh, thank you, Mr. King in the chat, Supplement Aid and Nutrition Program. Thank you both.
Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program.
Ah, thank you both. Okay, we have Mr. Constant in the queue.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the converse question. Are we looking at any areas where the state lacking their authority because of the expiration, but we continue to have, the health powers granted us under the state? Are there any ways we can, or investigating, picking up the slack for where the state's dropping the ball?
And again, I would defer those to Kate Vogel, who's not on this call. I know Anna is there. I don't know, Anna, if you want to add anything to that question.
Thanks, Alex. Sorry, slowed to the mute button. I know we're investigating possible opportunities, but I have nothing to report on today.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is that all, Mr. Constant?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have Ms. Kennedy in the queue. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is just in regard to the best place to send the public for a update, a current update, on the distribution of any of the grants funding, whether you're looking at what's still out there potentially, or, you know, because people, I think, are still working, waiting on the distribution of some of these funds. So, anyway, I'm just kind of wondering, how up-to-date is our website? I know we have a couple of places you can go on the Muni website. So, really, what's the best avenue for somebody to basically check up on how the funds have been distributed and whether or not they might be still waiting on something that they could be getting? Thanks.
You know, through the chair, I think that's a fairly complex question, because outside of the $22 million that is going to be before you on Resolution 2021-47, the rest of the funds have been distributed to the various partners that we've been working with. So, and I think I would have to, if somebody had a very specific question on a specific program, I could definitely work with Mr. Schute, who's also not on the call, to understand where we are in that specific program. But outside of the ones that are going to be before you, all the rest of those funds have been distributed.
Okay, well, my understanding, maybe we could talk about this then on Tuesday night, just to try to nail this down a little bit better. But my understanding is that we have distributed the money, but the organizations and entities that have been given the money have not quite finished that process yet. Maybe I'm wrong on that. Maybe they have absolutely completed all the distribution through those other entities, but that kind of is the question, and that's one I got just maybe two days ago from a constituent. So, you know, maybe we can just get an update of all the ways that the public can kind of check up on this on Tuesday. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Slivka. Any other questions from members? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we will go ahead and move on to Item C. And thank you, Mr. Slivka, for covering Item B, which is Update on 2020 and 2021 Budgets. Lance Wilber, OMB Director. Are you there, Mr. Wilber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. So, a couple of things on 2020. At your February meeting, you received an informational report that had the year-to-date on expenditures budget to actuals at the end of November. I think December is coming close to being closed, and then after that, they will, Alex's team does sort of some refinement to close out the year. But at the end of November, we were at about 92% through the fiscal year, but only about 70, a little less than 75% of the total budget had been spent, and a breakdown of that, about 80% of the, 88% of the labor, but a significant amount of the nonlabor. And Assembly Member Kennedy, when she reviewed that report, caught a, I thought, something that at the year-end would be more obvious, and she has some really good questions. And Ms. Kennedy, if you don't mind, I'm just going to go ahead and repeat some of the observations that you recognized. It appears that while we're 92% through the year, and we're only about 75% of the total budgets have spent, it looks, it might appear that we're going to have a significant amount of fund balance at the end of the year, and that is still really unknown. But one of the reasons it appears that we have so much unspent, as Mr. Slivka mentioned, we put a lot of fund balance into departments, and we put budget in those departments to programs in 2020. And when we did that, we put that budget into those departments to support a lot of the programs that the Assembly approved. So, when you see the action that you take on moving those, that fund balance from 2020 into 2021, as we close out the year, the numbers are going to actually become a lot clearer and a lot closer. But if you did take an opportunity to see the November report, and you see that the spend is significantly less than where we are at the fiscal year, it's primarily due to the amount of money that we added those departments in 2020 that they weren't able to finish, and then we're going to move them into 2021. So, I still expect, outside of that action, that, I noted in the memo, that I think most departments are going to be pretty close. I've mentioned, I think, probably since September, that we knew that police and fire are probably going to be a little bit over. I'm also being come aware that we have probably a couple departments that are going to be a little bit over in their leave cash out. We budget departments for a certain amount of leave cash out, and even some of the smaller departments were not able to take all of the leave. So, as we're closing the year, and we see some of those changes, we're going to true all of those things up, part of our first-quarter budget revision process. So, and then as December closes, we'll be able to give you a report as soon as possible. I don't think we're going to make the meeting next week, but we'll hope to shoot for the first meeting in March for the December, and that'll get us a pretty good sense of budget to actuals for 2020. So, that's where we are on 2020. And before I go to 2021, I'll pause for a moment, Madam Chair, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. I don't see anyone in the queue, and I'll just note that the document for the November 2020 expenditure report is online.
Yes, it was, it's, yeah, it was, I can't remember the Assembly Agenda item. I think it was 10F6 or 5, AIM 26-2021. So, for 2021 budget, I sent, the administration had sent out some guidance to the department heads earlier in the month. I think it was sent out on February 1st. We also sent out a calendar, and as part of that calendar process, the administration had asked for departments to submit any adjustments they might need in the first-quarter budget revisions. Those adjustments are due to the Office of Management and Budget on the 26th of this month. They are to work through their executive manager, which means they either have to go through Alex, Chris, or Anna before they show up at OMB. We want to make sure that they are apprised of those. So, we'll look forward to seeing those from departments. In summary, the guidance was, if you had some unknown expenses or things that you were not aware of as part of your original submission, to submit those proposals. And so, I think we're aware of a couple, where some departments had some contracts that started in 2020, and they wanted to be able to maybe use some of that, those dollars back into their 21 budget for the contract work they were not able to complete. So, we're going to consider those requests. We're still on a schedule, then, to receive the fund balance probably at the end, the latter part of March, and then we'll be submitting our first-quarter budget revisions at the first meeting in April. And so, if there's any questions on that, I've also been working with Desiree on setting up and verifying the calendar for the work sessions, not only for the administration's presentation, and a schedule for the Assembly if they want to, as they review ours and consider amendments. So...
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Actually, I put myself in the queue real quick, just to note for members that it's the intent of the Chair of the Assembly, for members to work first-quarter budget priorities through the appropriate committees. And if it's not possible to address those priorities within the committee, to notify the Chair, Chair Rivera, or Desiree Camacho, and work with them on that. The timeframe, as far as when the committee chairs need to get those budget priorities to Chair Rivera, is ASAP, I'm told, ASAP, definitely before the memo goes out, and the Chair will be preparing a first-quarter budget revision priority memo to share with the administration. So, I imagine we will get a harder timeframe soon on when those priorities are due. And we have actually Mr. Whittleton, Mr. Rivera, and Ms. Kennedy in the queue. And actually, Mr. Whittleton, if you don't mind, if I go to Mr. Rivera first, because I believe he may want to comment or correct anything I said. Is that okay, Mr. Whittleton? Okay, well...
I'm going to assume he's on mute and saying, yes, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Mr. Rivera, you want to go ahead?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, no, that was an excellent summary. I guess the only added detail I would state, as Mr. Wilbur mentioned earlier, departments are getting their budget requests into the administration and to OMB on February 26th. So, likely, I'm hoping that we will be able to get in a memo very similar to what we have prepared for the last two November budget cycles, but to get in a memo by early to mid-March, likely no later than March 15th. But I would welcome the advice from Mr. Wilbur, if he has sort of a drop dead that he thinks we should follow. But, yeah, just like I stated earlier, very similar process to what we've done the last couple of years with the November budget, where we are going to send the administration priorities budgetary, policy-wise, that we would like incorporated into the first-quarter budget revisions. And we will see how things pan out, and obviously, if things aren't incorporated by the administration, the Assembly will still have a chance via the amendment process, the normal amendment process, to make changes during first quarter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Wilbur, did you want to address Mr. Rivera's question now concerning March 15th as an appropriate memo deadline?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. I would just say, the sooner that you can provide that to us, that would be helpful for, it would allow the administration the timing in which we can consider whatever changes you might, or whatever proposals you might want to have. The 15th is starting to get to a point where, you know, what happens after the departments amend their submissions, is that we're going to spend some time, probably, you know, a week or so, kind of going through those, asking departments clarifying questions. So, if you could have them to us, and I would really encourage you to have them no later than the 5th. The 12th is just, we're really starting to get to a point where the mayor's going to have to start making some decisions. And so, if you can get them to me no later than the 12th, I think we'll work with that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. We will go back to Mr. Whittleton, and then we'll go to Ms. Kennedy. So, Mr. Whittleton?
Thanks. So, one of the things that we do is we find money to ASD, and if they're a student allocation or whatever, it's based on their formula, and if that dropped because they have less students, does it, will that impact first-quarter budget revisions, how much we give to the school dis, how much we would budget for the school district for '21?
Mr. Wilbur or Mr. Slivka, would you like to take this one?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I turned my mic off instead of, I didn't recognize it was still on. Mr. it was still on. Mr. Weddleton, the, the student count, base student count for the school district as they're generating their budget, I don't think it's going to affect our first quarter budget revisions. What it's going to affect is the mill rate and the school district's budget as they prepare theirs. And so I think that is the, the key decision point, knowing about this student count. And I'll verify that with-
Well, if I could embellish, I, but we give, there's a maximum amount that we are allowed to give. And that is based on, I think, their, the amount they get from the state. So if that amount they get from the state drops, then the amount we're allowed to give them drops. And I know a couple of years ago, it was quite significant where they had gotten quite a bit left. And that left $1 million or some large number that we were unable, we had budgeted for the school district, but were unable to give them because of that cap.
Through the Chair, Mr. Weddleton. I'm going to have to, maybe we could follow this offline about the amount that we were not able to give them. Because really, the student count helps set the amount of taxes that we're allowed to actually assess to support them. But maybe I'm misunderstanding your question, and we could follow up after this meeting.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go refresh my memories and my notes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I have two questions now, but I want to follow up a little bit on Mr. Weddleton's line of thinking. And that is in regard to a bit of, you know, a point that we brought up in regard to whether or not the Assembly or the municipality can actually grant funds to the Anchorage School District and not impact our local contribution cap. So I guess I'm just bringing that up again, just to make sure that we're still trying to figure out the answer to that. I think the Anchorage School District was going to get the answer from D E E D. So I don't know if anybody has contacted your office on that, Mr. Wilbur. But, but that would be one consideration that I think we probably still need an answer on. My other question, though, and the one I wanted to ask really, was in regard to the revenues that we may or may not receive from the alcohol tax and how that could actually impact some of the expenditures that we're already, we've considered approved, especially when it comes to some of the staffing increases that we're making. Like, I was thinking particularly the funding that we're giving to staff APD and AFD for increasing the services there. But my question is in regard to whether or not we might need to use fund balance, or even if we could use fund balance to offset the costs of those particular projects from fund balance if we're, if we don't get the alcohol tax revenues that we anticipated, and, and by which we were depending on when we basically allocated and approved the projects that we were. So question in regard to how we might be able to use fund balance for those projects that were actually approved for alcohol tax revenues. Thanks.
Through the Chair, Assemblymember Kennedy, two very good questions. I'll try to do them in the order. So the first one is, when we do first quarter budget revisions, you know, we're not going to have very much data, but we will have some data on the revenue coming in from the alcohol tax. We're also going to get a revision or any revised projections on the, on the alcohol tax from Treasury. They, we revise all of our revenue projections as part of the budget. So we're going to be looking forward to that. If there is a need to make some adjustments based on better projections or different projections, then we will propose those and simultaneously make some adjustments to the proposed programs. If there are no changes in the revenue projections and we maintain our approved budget, and for some reason we come to the end of the year and the amount of alcohol tax is not projected to come in at a, at the amount that we had budgeted, we have two options at that point. We can start curbing some of those expenses at that point. And if the administration and the Assembly decide not to do that, I can verify with Ms. Vogel. But I don't think there's a prohibition that would allow us to use fund balance at the end of the year to cover those expenses in the event that the alcohol tax does not meet its revenue projections. But I would recommend that it's premature to add fund balance to the program, to, to projects or staff at this time, in the event, if the alcohol tax is not going to come through. It might be worth looking at if the projections are coming in significantly less during first quarter for alcohol. And at that point, we need to make a decision. Do we continue the programs we've identified? Or maybe we just curb some of those off or reduce the amount of effort to match the new alcohol projection? But we will be looking at it as part of the first quarter. I would not recommend that we use any fund balance on the alcohol tax as part of first quarter. I would recommend that we use the alcohol tax projections to fund those projects. And in the event that they're short, we deal with that at the end, either through curbing the expense or potentially using fund balance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Any follow-up, Ms. Kennedy?
Well, no, thank you. And then I didn't know if you did have a comment about what we've heard from ASD in regard to whether or not we can actually grant funds to them for other, you know, non, non-ASD funds, but for our own municipal grants, and if that had an impact on their eligibility for the local contribution.
Through the Chair.
I don't know if there's an answer yet or not, but thank you.
No, excellent. Thank, I have not heard back from the school district, but I've made a note that I will get ahold of their CFO or their OMB director, and I'll report back to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Okay, Mr. Wilbur, I think we're back to you on item C, little letter B, impacts of COVID-19 on budget. Did you have anything you wanted to add there?
No, I don't. I think Mr. Slifka mentioned some of the grant programs at the top, and he mentioned the importance of the resolution that you guys are going to see next week. So I don't have much to add. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Appreciate all the information. Okay, we will move on to D, MOA Financial Status. Alex Slifka, CFO, Mr. Slifka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I turn it over to Dan Moore to provide you with an update, I did want to remind people that as a result of the Governor's veto of school bond debt reimbursement, this is going to be the year that property taxes are going to have to be raised substantially to cover that $40 million payment. So whatever, as, as Mr. Wilbur said, whatever modest impact might happen due to lower student count, it's going to get swamped probably by the additional taxes we're need to, going to have to collect in order to make that school bond debt payment. So I just wanted to make sure, remind people of that. The translation is roughly, I think it's $115 per $100,000 of assessed value. So it, it will be substantial. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moore to provide you with an update on our revenue expectations for 2020.
Okay, thanks, Alex. And thank you, I presume Desiree has put up the slide. So, so I'm just going to give a quick update on the revenues. We are into a new year. However, we're still actually seeing postings for 2020 occur almost every day by the Controller Division. And we also know that in the month of March, the Controller Division will do some year-end adjustments to areas like property taxes that can swing fairly significantly. Past years, some of the biggest swings have been anywhere from plus or minus $1 to $3 million. So, so that's just a heads up in terms of where we are, in terms of knowing our, our year-end revenues for 2020. To, to look at this particular slide, the top paragraph, what you see is the current revenue shortfall for 2020 is now at $22.9 million, negative revenue variance. That is a worsening since the last time we spoke with the committee of just shy of $3 million. And I'll, I'll cover the reasons why in just one second. The, just in general, that $22.9 million negative revenue variance, three quarters of it is directly COVID-related. So, so that's just something important to know. The other big revenue variance that's really not COVID-related would be in the Fire Department EMS area, where that's several million dollars off of budget. And that's been explained in the past as a timing issue. So if we look at the, the first set of bullets there on this, on this particular slide, the, there are four main reasons why the revenue variance has worsened to the $22.9 million. And just for perspective, the worst it ever was last year, when we kept updating a month by month, was at a $25 million negative revenue, revenue variance. So we've kind of been in this tight range of 20 to 25 million for a number of months now. So anyway, the four main reasons are property taxes. We had the final billing of personal property at the very end of the year. And so that, combined with some real property audit billings that did not go out related to COVID, that, that accounted for that worsening with property taxes. Ambulance service fees, in addition to the timing difference on the special contract they had to recover more reimbursement, there's also some, some additional decrease in sort of the more normal volume of EMS fees. That is something that AFD, the Fire Department, is looking into. And we still have not yet heard back from them, but it'll take some time for them to try to make sense of that. But that's, that was a new piece of information to us in the last few weeks. Tobacco tax is worse. This one is always tough to predict. It really depends on the purchasing behavior of the major distributors month by month. And so we believe that their purchases were abnormally low in December, and we, we expect that their purchases will be abnormally high in January or February. So there was a mill rate adjustment that's done each year that factors in inflation, and it actually turned out to be a slightly negative adjustment. So the distributors actually save a tiny bit of tax by deferring their purchases to January instead of making them in December. The motor vehicle registration, this is a positive, quite a bit of a positive. So now it looks like we're pretty much right close to budget there. I think one possible explanation is that maybe with very low interest rates and some improved outlook going forward, there might have been some encouragement for new car purchases that had been previously delayed. So that, that may have helped the situation on that. In the middle section of bullets, just going to comment mainly on the room tax one. Just to put it in perspective here, room tax for 2020 is about 57% less than it was in 2019. So that shows how much of the hit room tax took due to COVID. We have prepared some initial draft projections for the first quarter budget revision that I think Lance was just referring to. And for room tax, just in general terms, we were projecting that room tax will have, will have recovered about halfway back from its pre-COVID days in, in 2021. That's the current projection, and that's with the most current information we have available. So that is going to be a set of numbers that we provide OMB. There's kind of a midpoint range that we, we recommend following. And so that's, that's sort of the outlook for room tax for the remainder of 2021. Just to touch upon one other revenue that's actually not listed here, but it was mentioned or talked about just a moment ago with alcohol tax. Lance is correct, there will be some information that they can consider, the group can consider when doing the first quarter budget revision. But I would just caution that it literally will be only one month of tax returns from retail alcohol establishments that will be able to factor into the first quarter budget revision. The, sort of the brighter, brighter news or the better news here is that in projecting the revenues for alcohol tax, the projection we have is actually broken down month by month for all of 2021. So we will be able to kind of track as we go along how we're doing compared to how we thought we would be doing month by month, and then cumulatively as the year goes on. So, so we're going to try as best we can to keep on top of how alcohol revenues are coming in. And we will certainly alert OMB on a very regular basis if we see that there is any significant variance one way or the other. The last thing I'd mention, and this is again, not on these, this slide or the other two slides, which are just further delineation, is Treasury has had an extremely talented person working for us for the last 15 years. His name is Eric Larson. He's our, he is our only revenue analyst. He has done amazing work. And a lot of these reports where you say, boy, this is terrific, how rich the data is, how professionally presented it is, that is all due to Eric Larson. And I know John Weddleton in recent past commented on the quality of these reports. Unfortunately, in losing someone with that kind of experience and that level of knowledge, experience, and skills, it's going to be extremely hard to find anyone sort of off the street that will just jump in and, and just pick it up right where Eric left it off. So for the remainder of 2021, we in Treasury are going to be hurting a bit to try to, try to rebuild and to, it'll even take probably at least a couple of months to even find someone and to get them in the, in the spot. So, so we're going to do our best to, to, obviously to continue to give information, but the depth and the quality is, is undoubtedly going to be hurt. Because without cloning being legal, we cannot replicate what Eric Larson can do just on a dime. So he has done a terrific job in documenting his job. So whoever the successor is down the road will have some very detailed instructions to follow. But it is a very, very in-depth process that, that we do on these revenues, and it has paid off immeasurably for the city. And again, Eric Larson is, he is the person responsible. So I just wanted to let the Budget Committee know that is a major loss. But he's, he's retiring. He has many years in purse, and he's just ready to, to close out his municipal employment. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you to Mr. Larson for his service. Some positive, very positive comments in the chat from Mr. Gates, "Mr. Larson was excellent and will be missed," and from Mr. King, "A true, a true resource for the community, solid as a rock." So best of luck in the, in the hiring process, Mr. Moore. And do members have any questions? Okay, I don't see anybody in the chat. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Slifka for those updates and for the information. That brings us to item E, AR 2021-47, a resolution appropriating fund balance in an amount not to exceed 22-odd million to continue programs approved in the priority areas and framework for allocation of the COVID-19 relief funds programs. And we already had some discussion on this. Is there anything else, Mr. Slifka, you wanted to add?
Nothing at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. This will be item 14F on the agenda this coming Tuesday. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, Mr. Weddleton.
Hang on. Dang it. Oh, I am unmuted. Sorry. Is there any change in allocation of the funds based on this? We've been getting some emails from a downtown business owner who is worried that the tourism and hospitality grant monies are not separated as two items on this, but are combined into one statement?
There, there has been no change whatsoever to what you previously allocated. And that may just be terminology, but the programs that you previously authorized are still the exact same ones. And this just reflects both, a bit of, this obviously reflects money that didn't quite get spent in 2020, but which we fully intend to spend in 2021.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Slifka. Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Constant?
Just on that note, the, the entity that has been, that has committed of their own accord to take on that project, which is getting the funds out, continues to act in good faith despite all rumors to the contrary by a subset of individuals who feel like they've been wronged. And so just know that those funds are soon coming onto the, the ground, and they'll be out as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Any other questions or comments from members? Okay, I don't see anyone else. So that brings us to F, Other Business. Is there any other business for the committee? Is there any other business for the committee? Okay, I don't see anyone in the chat. We'll go ahead then and move on to number four, Committee Legislative and Budget Priorities. The first one is legislative priorities, and we have not had anything for this committee. Does anyone have anything they want to bring up at this time? Okay, moving on to B, Fiscal Year 2021 First Quarter Budget Revisions, Committee Related Requests. And again, this is part of that process to work first quarter budget revision priorities through committee. We didn't have any budget items specifically for 2021 from this committee. I will also just note that per Chair Rivera, we have two work sessions scheduled that should be on everyone's calendar. One is Friday, April 16th at 10:00 a.m., and another is Friday, April 23rd at 1:00 p.m. to address budget revisions. Anybody have anything else or anything they want to bring up? Okay, moving on to C-
Yes, Mr. France, there is one item.
Okay, Mr. Constant.
And some of this may be counting the chickens before they hatch. So as we're all closely paying attention to what's going on in Washington, DC at this time in regards to the American Rescue Plan, the House bill does have a substantial increment for Anchorage in it, and that's being moved over to the Senate shortly. Should that survive the Senate, then I'm wanting to make sure that folks from a budgetary perspective are preparing themselves for a robust process by which we do similarly what we did the last time, meeting and conversing about the priorities for that spending in a public way so that we have a better chance of the public understanding where those funds are going.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Anyone else have anything to add on any of these items? Legislative priorities, first quarter budget revisions, budget items for 2022? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the chat. That brings us to five, Audience Participation. Are there any members of the public here?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Haberman? It's hard to hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Actually, could you turn your volume up a little bit more?
Okay, yeah, can you hear me better now?
That's a little bit better. Okay, you'll have three minutes.
Right, I'll say it now. Okay, thank you. I think the first thing I'd like to say is this, by the way, my name is Eugene Carl Haberman. You know, at some point, I'm a watchdog, is this. The scenario that's going on in the state legislature is rather distressing, particularly how they're having a long-time difficulty assigning who's leading the House and Senate. And that has been disruptive in a way that led to a situation of emergency declaration as an excuse not being approved. Now, also, I like to, that's one point. Second point is, yes, 10 to 1, you're going to be getting more federal money coming out of Washington. And a word of caution in the use of money. I'm not questioning the approval and going and taking the money, but I'm worried about that. Every year, you have to approve a budget of the city. But when you approve money coming from feds or state or wherever, you've got to look at it as, are you creating a situation of some permanency that the money you receive is not permanent? It's more likely it's not going to be repeated? And then you have implemented steps that have permanent costs to the operation of the city? And you need to take a look at that every time you receive money and how that plays in the long term and not the present term. And also, another last note here is, toward the end of the meeting, it was noted that some loss, I guess, retirement of an important person in providing you information about the continued examination of what the financial situation and what you've got to work from. That's concerning because it's, of all times now with the economic, economy of a state and nation, it's very important to have those type of people in play so that you have frequent, up-to-date information to see exactly what's going on financially and also the public knowing so you could have a better grasp when you make those decisions. And that's all I have to say with 30 seconds to spare.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. And actually, let me just go to Mr. Wilbur, who appears to have his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize, I forgot to mention this in my report. I wanted to let the Assemblymembers know. We are working to start the next capital improvement budget process with the surveys with community councils. We plan to start that in March. So by chance, if you're at a community council before our March Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I just wanted to make you aware that we'll be reaching out to them in early March. So just, and if they have, obviously, if they have questions, they can reach out to us, but just to make you aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Okay, so we'll go back to public participation. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I thought I had heard someone start to speak. You can unmute by, with star six. I'll just give it a couple more seconds here. Okay, so a final call for audience participation. Please hit star six if you need to unmute. Okay, I am not hearing anyone else. Thank you all for participating in the meeting today. I appreciate the information from the members of the administration. And I wish you all a good rest of your week, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.